All right, welcome. Good to see everybody here this evening. If you please, if you please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Bright Cruz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Kozinski? Councilmember Albrit?
Present.
Councilmember Hartman?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you. If you please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item on our agenda is a quasi judicial item.
Mayor, there is one quasi judicial item on the agenda. The council is well aware, but just for the general public, quasi judicial items have been determined by the Florida courts to be treated differently than all other matters that would come before the council. It's done in a formal process where the applicant has to prove by competent substantial evidence that they meet the code criteria. The item before you tonight is a plat. It will require five affirmative votes from the town council to approve. I'll ask the clerk to please read the item into the record. And after that point, we can do our Jennings disclosure and start the process.
Item number three is a resolution, the final order of the town of council, of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving application number PL 62-23, Haiti Grove Plat, comprising four single-family dwelling lots on 9.05 acres, generally located on the south side of Luray Road and the east side of Appaloosa Trail, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing an effective date.
Before I call up Jane from police who's here, and before we swear everyone in the audience and who wishes to speak, we can do the disclosures. Has anyone on the town council had any ex parte communications about this matter? The court says you now have to state with specificity what that discussion is.
Yeah, I'll start. I had a conversation with Ms. Parrish out in the parking lot concerning this quasi judicial item.
I've not had any contact.
No, otherwise.
I've had a very brief discussion with Ms. Parrish, and I had a brief discussion with Billy Shapiro.
I had a brief discussion with Jeff.
Thank you.
Our planner.
Planner. Yes, sir. At this point, let's swear in anyone who wishes to speak on this matter. If you could please stand and raise your right hand if you're going to speak on this matter.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you. Jane, are you going to be presenting for the applicant? If you could please come to the podium, state your name. Hi, Elizabeth. Good seeing everyone tonight.
I always get nervous when Noel's here, so I just say.
I wonder why.
Jane, if you could please state your name for the record, that you've been sworn in, that you represent the applicant, and that you understand the proceeding.
Jane Storms, Police Land Surveyors, 5381 Knott Hill Road, Sunrise, Florida, for the applicant. I have been sworn and am ready for any questions you may have.
Thank you. At this point, we're going to turn on, turn it over to our planner, Jeff Cadens, to present the staff report.
Thank you, Keith. Mayor and council, good evening. This is a plat application to subdivide just over nine acres into four lots, each with two net acres or larger, ranging to about 2.1 net acres. The plat is at the southeast corner of Luray Road and Appaloosa Trail, and it dedicates 50 feet of right-of-way for Appaloosa Trail, and nothing for Luray. Luray has 40 feet of right-of-way and a 20-foot access easement that overlies part of that right-of-way. There's a single-family home that's under construction now on Lot 2. It was placed such that it will meet the setback requirements and all other requirements of the new lot lines when the plat is recorded. Lot 1 has access to either Luray or Appaloosa, and Lots 2, 3, and 4 would access Luray. The petitioner is going to construct a turnaround in between Lots 3 and 4, which will be, is determinus, or will be determinus, of the paved portion of Luray Road. The staff recommendation is to approve with three conditions, one of which I'm going to add on the record tonight to what's in the staff report and the resolution, and one which the applicant has asked for a slight modification, which I can car with. The first one is that title to Lots 1 and 2 remain unified until such time as some accessory structures that are on proposed Lot 1 are demolished. That's in the works right now. The condition states that demolition shall occur no later than September 28th, 2024, six months from now. The owner should provide an affidavit acknowledging this condition, and that violation of the condition shall be enforceable as a violation of the town's regulations. The reason for the condition is simply that those accessory structures are going to be on a lot or going to be on a lot that doesn't contain a residence, so they'd be, they wouldn't be accessory any longer. Secondly, that the turnaround on Luray Road be constructed prior to the issuance of a building permit. This condition in the resolution and staff report says before any additional residential permits are issued, the applicant has requested that the permit for Lot 1 be issued, and that Lots 3 and 4 permits be held in abeyance until the turnaround is constructed. Since Lot 1 does access Appaloosa, the staff concurs with that. Should council be willing to make that adjustment? And then finally, the applicant has agreed to improve the portion of Luray Road east of the terminus of the paved portion where the turnaround will be as a horse trail, or recreational trail rather, to the Flamingo alignment, the Flamingo Greenway alignment. That concludes the report.
Thank you. Does any member of the town council have any questions of Jeff at this time?
Yeah, I do. Jeff, I'm a little fuzzy or hazy on the horse trail connection. Can you go into a little greater depth on that, to Flamingo?
Sure. Flamingo Road on the west side of the canal is a designated greenway, Broward County Greenway. And by improving, by demucking and appropriately filling and surfacing about 250, 300 feet or so of the existing right-of-way within Luray between the paved portion of Luray and that trail, we have a connection that's suitable for using by residents and others.
Does that trail, does that trail go into Cooper City, or does it stay?
The, well, the trail, it's the east-west trail along Luray stays in Southwest Ranches.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other member of the town council have any questions?
Yeah, I did have a question for you, Jeff. If you could clarify for me, the section of Luray Road that goes from Appaloosa pretty much all the way down to Flamingo, is that currently a town road, or is that a private road?
It's kind of split right now. The pavement is partially in town right-of-way, partially in Cooper City. The applicant's plans are actually to shift the road to the south, so it's entirely within Southwest Ranches. That will help align the cul-de-sac that they're, that they're going to construct as well.
And do they dedicate the road to the town then when they're finished?
It is, it is dedicated to the town. It's right-of-way.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect. Good, good. Thank you.
Sure.
Jeff, follow-up on the horse trail. This horse trail, it's something I had requested earlier. It would connect to the north-south trail that parallels the big canal along Flamingo?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Jeff, would there be any connection from Luray to Flamingo? A road, actual road, would there be any connection?
No, this plat doesn't change what's already there. There's existing right-of-way that extends to Flamingo, the Flamingo right-of-way from Appaloosa, but it's town right-of-way, the town controls it. And it's the town's policy, and it would be a violation of the town's comprehensive plan to bridge that canal, to try to bridge it and connect. It's strictly prohibited in our comprehensive plan.
Are there any plans with, I can't think of the name of the property that's directly to the north?
The Shot Center.
Shot Center, thank you. Are there any plans to close off? Because I know basically there is a cut-through road there through their parking areas.
I'm going to let the applicant address that further because she's been, they've been in contact with the Shot Center, and I think they can shed more light on it than I can. So rather than have you here third-hand, I'll let them address the question.
And I thank you, Jeff, on that. That's a real important issue for Sunshine Ranches.
Any other questions of council? If not, we're going to turn it over to the applicant. Jane, if you could please come up and make your presentation and maybe address the council members' comments.
Hi again. Okay, so exactly, Councilman Hartman, we don't use your question about Shot.
So is there any cooperation between the property owner and Shot to either close or leave open the access into Shot's parking lot that I know a lot of residents at Sunshine Ranches use to cut through to Flamingo?
There is discussion actually between the two of them because the school, the facility, the Shot facility, doesn't necessarily like the cut-through either. So after we get the plat started and done, recorded, they can start doing that. They were actually discussing maybe even coming in and vacating some of that other right-of-way in Cooper City because there is public right-of-way in Cooper City, too, that kind of make up this whole right-of-way. So yes, there has been. They're looking forward to doing that. They were kind of holding off until we were able to get the plat recorded and done.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other members of the council have any questions of the applicant? Jane, do you have anything else you'd like to tell the council?
Thank you for your time. I'm looking for your approval.
Thank you. At this point, we'll call up any member of the public who's been sworn in and wishes to speak on the item. They have, I forgot how long they have to speak. We haven't done this before. Three, two minutes. Two minutes. When's the last quasi item we had, Noel? Must have been like six months.
Noel Hollingsworth, and I have been sworn in. 199th Avenue. I was going to talk about the trail going from Appaloosa over to the Greenway Trail. The only part that's not in there that I would like to see in there is that that trail maintenance be taken care of by the landowners of that, those four landowners. And that's, they're going to build it. I'd like, we have put in there in other trails that they maintain it. Those other builders in other parts of town, I'd like this one to also take care of their own, in front of their own property. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishes to speak on this item? Please, Laurie, just come up.
Laurie Parrish, 12801 Luray Road. First of all, I don't usually say this about developers, but this company has been nothing but kind to the neighbors. Their workers have never parked their cars with a horse's ride. And I found out tonight why. Because the project manager or builder is married to the people who are going to live in that home. And so if, and the people that own Perfect Choice are their first new residents there. So they've taken great care to be polite. They're nice, their house is lovely, the landscaping is marvelous. And for me to say that, that's a lot. But the only thing I've asked them, and I hope you all will consider, is when the homeowners association researched this issue before Sunshine Ranches, and the road as it exists, the planning council told me Cooper City owns to the middle, and then Southwest Ranches owns the south side. But the access points on the recorded plat are Flamingo Road and Luray. And I asked the builder if he would consider abandoning or giving up the road right-of-way. The policy is a well-reputable firm all around. I'm glad to have them as my new neighbors. Thank you.
Any other member of the public wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, public session is closed. Jeff, do you have any concluding comments?
None for me.
Jane, do you have any concluding comments or addressing any of the comments made? Noel made a comment about whether or not they'll maintain the trail. Do you want to address that?
Of course. That should not be a problem at all. I'm sure the neighbors would absolutely would like to have that part of the unimproved right-of-way. It's just grass now anyway, mowed and taken care of.
And vacating the right-of-way.
Right, with conjunction with Shot.
Thank you. Just, I mean, I know that the initial plat showed Luray connecting to Flamingo, and I was shocked when I heard that, and I was like, this can't ever happen.
Right, there's always been legal access, it's just not physically possible to do that.
All right, thank you.
And Jeff had mentioned that, too, that your comp plan doesn't allow it either.
Thank you.
Sure, of course.
Thank you. Mayor, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to you for deliberation. Again, you can approve, deny, approve with conditions or table. If you approve with conditions, please consider the staff's conditions. The staff's amendment to the condition, which is on number two of the resolution, they would just get rid of Lot 1 and just make it Lots 3 and 4, and the additional conditions that were stipulated to by the applicant tonight. So it's over to you, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Keith. Is there any, I don't think we have, we need a motion to approve this, correct?
No, it's quasi.
It's quasi, so it's all good, okay. So any discussion on this item as far as any of the recommendations or items that we want to include?
Just a quick question, maybe it's already been said, and I just didn't pick it up, pick up on it. They're asking to split Lot 3 and 4, but Lot 1 and 2 will come at a later date. Will they have to come back to us at that time for one or two?
Well, Keith answered, I don't believe.
No, there's no coming back to you on this. They're all individual building permits for the single-family homes.
They just have to do that work by the end of September.
I'm good with it.
Everybody good?
I'm good with all the agreements and stipulations. I'm good with it.
Okay, so, so we're doing this with all the recommended stipulations as well as the maintenance for the horse trail? Okay, if we can please call the roll.
No, we need to have a motion of second stating that.
That's what I.
Motion to approve.
I thought that's what I asked originally.
With the stipulations. With the stipulations, motion to approve with the stipulations and the conditions set by staff.
Second. Great. Thank you. All right, if we can please call the roll.
Councilmember Albrit?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kozinski?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Very good.
Very good. Thank you.
Been so long since we've done one, we forgot.
All right. We're pleased to have our representative here, Robin Bartman. Robin, thank you for, I know the sessions up in Tallahassee seem to get longer and longer, but thank you for your work up there. If you can give us a report on what was done.
Thank you very much. I'm very, very happy to be here. And let me start with the best news for Southwest Ranches. We received full funding for the drainage project on Southwest 183rd Avenue. So I was very happy to have that appropriation for you all. And that's really important because it's two, it's less than two miles from Hawks Bluff Elementary. So the children on that road do not get public transportation, have to walk to school. There aren't sidewalks, so it's a huge problem. And I'm really excited to be able to bring those dollars home for this community, and thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to do so. Another appropriation.
Excuse me just for a second. Sir, are you recording?
Yes.
Recording is not allowed in this building. Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Another appropriation that will impact the members of this community is the Dellenbach Foundation received full funding for $81,000. If you're familiar with Jeff Dellenbach, he's a former Miami Dolphins football player, and his foundation helps veterans and people in need. They go to him when they have nowhere else to go. And what I like is all the work they do for the veterans in Florida. And when they can't get help from the VA, or when they're in dire straits, the Dellenbacher step up to make a difference. So I had a really good session. Again, I've actually passed three bills that I'll go over quickly with you. One bill that will impact you, and this is really for the firefighters in the room, it's the, it's a bill that would allow blue lights on fire trucks. Now, you're asking why, why blue lights on fire trucks? Because every national study shows that blue lights are most effective at night. You're an equestrian rural community. You don't have streetlights on all of your streets. It's a problem. People drive up and down 27, where some of your first responders, they'll go to scenes of accidents there to help people. So all the national studies show that blue lights are best in the night, red lights are best in the day. 28 states have already moved blue lights for both law enforcement and fire. We have not been able to do this here. The fire chiefs have been trying to run this bill for seven years. Luckily, I met with Sheriff Gualtieri, who is a very honorable man. He sat down with me, we worked on it over a month, and were able to work on a compromised position. So now the back of your fire trucks will be allowed to have blue lights on the rear to be used at night because, quite honestly, every first responder deserves to come home to their family. And if we know that statistically this is the best way to protect our first responders, then we need to get that done. And the governor signed that bill on Friday, so I'm very proud of that bill. The second bill, oh, thank you. The second bill is one of my favorite things to do, is when you work on a bill, but then it goes in a package, so you don't have to do anything. So I worked with Senator Harrell on a bill to access funding for mobile response teams. Those are crisis teams that go out into your community to deal with someone who's having a mental health crisis, so they don't end up in an institution or end up with, you know, going into the criminal justice system. These teams do a remarkable job on linking people to resources and de-escalating the situation. So we had that in a bill. Luckily for me, Representative, Senator Harrell also ran the Live Healthy bill, so that bill was put in the Live Healthy package, and so that bill also passed. And the last bill was a labor of love. It was for Gabby Petito. We all know Gabby Petito. When she passed away, when she was, she was a domestic violence victim murdered by her fiance on a road trip. A law enforcement officer did respond to a domestic violence call. He did not have the tools, so this is actually something that Mr. Petito is working on. And it's to ensure that every law enforcement agency in the state of Florida uses a lethality assessment. So Representative Baker and I prime code each other, others' bills. So we, whichever bill got through, we worked on, we worked on the bills together, presenting them and getting the votes. And so what it actually does is it will require them to go through a list of questions when they go to these very dangerous situations. These are research, evidence-based questions. So based on those questions, the law enforcement officer can make a decision and link the person to a resource. And it's simple as simply, simple as if you're choked, that is, statistically, you'll, you know, it's not going to be good for you. There are certain things they use in that domestic violence assessment. So very proud of that bill. And what's really interesting is we got it through all our committees, and we thought, oh my God, our bill is dead. We didn't get it on the floor. And then Dana Trubulci called us, who's my friend who worked on Kid Care with me, and said, guess what? They're going to let me amend your bill onto my bill. So this, the whole bill, like at the end, I don't know, this is a new thing they're doing. Our entire bill was amended onto 1224, and so now we'll have lethality assessments around, in the state of Florida. There were a couple bills that did not pass the finish line. One that was very important to me because of this community is changing the requirement in citizens. As we've spoken about this before, if your house replacement cost is above $700,000 and you live in Broward County, and you are insured by Citizens, they will kick you off, Citizens. You have people in your community that have been kicked off, Citizens, people in Southwest Broward because of that arbitrary number of $700,000. It should be noted that Dade County and Monroe County have a million-dollar threshold, but everyone else in the state has a $700,000 threshold. So I've gotten a study done, I've tried to get it in packages. Representative Kim Barfield, who's a freshman, she has, along with Southwest Broward, her area also has a high number of people getting kicked off. So we have the bill to raise the threshold. We were part of a Citizens package, and last second, they took it out. But we're very excited, we're not done, we're running it again next year. So that will directly impact your community. We did very little for property insurance. We had some really great bills. Kim and I had that bill. I also had a bill for senior citizens to get a rebate on their property insurance. That's really important because if you're 90, 94 years old, like my senior citizens in Century Village and living on Social Security, you can't go back to work to pay your condo bill. So this is one of those bills like Kid Care that I think is going to take multiple years to get done, but I'm excited to do it. If you are a homeowner who also owns rental properties that are single-family homes that are non-homesteaded and are insured by Citizen, you should know that when that bill is signed, that home will be kicked off Citizens. And you will, and they will allow a, an excess line of insurance to, like, take your policy, and those are not governed by the Office of Insurance. They have no rules and regulations, you'll have nowhere to go, and they're incredibly expensive. That bill has not been signed yet. I know people are talking about it. We have done everything, not we, I have fought, but the legislature has once again done everything they can to take away your local control. There is a bill regarding Airbnbs, and the bill would preempt you from doing anything you need to do for your community. So I spoke on that bill and State Affairs voted against it. We all spoke about it on the floor. It still passed. It could still get vetoed, we're hoping, but it preempts everything. Another bill regarding plastics and what the local governments can do to restrict single-use containers, they have now preempted you from doing that. And that's really important because we know that we want, we don't want an incinerator in our community. In order to do that, we need to recycle, we need to do the right things, take the right steps. And every time they preempt any one of your, you know, every time they preempt you and prevent your ability to do something to protect your community, it hurts all of us as local citizens because we elect you to make decisions for us. A bill that also made it through the House was a recycling plan that would be given to the state. I know that's very important because we want to stop that incinerator. And I met with the Department of Environmental Protection and many other groups while I was in session. And I also received an award from the National Recycling Association as one of their Legislative Champions of the Year for my work on trying to focus on that. I know you have a lot of business, so I'm not going to take much more time, but I want to take, I want to talk about two bills because this is a family community. And these bills will impact people's children, and that's why I'm going to discuss them. Number one, the social media bill, House Bill 3. What it does is it prohibits anyone from age 14 or under from having a social media account. The social media account, they don't give a list of what it is, but it has to do what algorithms they use. And we all know that Facebook, TikTok, YouTube, Instagram, they all have those algorithms. So they will not be able to get an account. The second thing it does is if your child is 14 and 15, you will have to give parental permission for them to access the account. The social media groups are going to be responsible for the verification process. So we have no idea how that's going to look. Are they going to require an ID? Are they gonna, are you going to be giving your child's birth certificate to them? So that all has to be worked out. Other bills have been passed in the, in the United States. They are being challenged and litigated as we speak. The reason for doing this bill is because we know social media is dangerous. We know that, you know, our children are stalked online by sexual predators who change their name, their age. We know that a lot of our children and our parents don't know that depending on what app they're using, you can pull up the exact location of where your child is. And my neighbor did not even know that until somebody sent her daughter a threatening message that she thought was a 13-year-old and wasn't. And, and they said, she goes, well, you don't know where I am. Well, guess what? He gave her the address because she had that location on in her app. So this is really going to be eye-opening for a lot of parents. We also know it leads to depression, death by suicide. There are a lot of issues with social media bullying. So this is a step, whether or not it will make it through litigation, but something needs to be done to protect our children. And we know that's where sexual predators go, to find children to traffic. The second one is because we all live near Griffin and Weston Road. I really live near there, and I can't tell you how many times I've been woken up because of the sirens because our teenagers go to the intersection, shut it down at 2:00 in the morning, and are doing donuts and stunt driving and hanging out the window and videoing them. I've seen it on social media. It's really interesting when my friends find their child's face on social media. So we have definitely upped the penalties for that. So parents need to talk to their children because that's something that, you know, they're teenagers. They, their frontal lobe is not developed, they are not making good decisions, and they are doing this. But now the law enforcement will be able to impound your car. They will, they've like tripled the. they've like tripled the amount of the fines. And for all the parents who think they're safe because their kids don't have a car, if your kid is a spectator, they are also going to get in trouble. So I want parents to know this, because I know we have all sat down with our kids, warned them about social media, warned them about the dangers of driving, the stunt driving, but now they're going to be serious repercussions for that. And the final law had to do with porch pirates, and that's a huge issue with people going in people's cars, stealing their Uber Eats, and a lot of times they are teenagers. If you steal something over $40, that will now be a felony.[636.91][636.91][laughter] It is, it is a third-degree felony. So that bill has not been signed yet, because it will be, we're waiting to see if that is going to be signed. But if you go steal somebody's Chinese food off their porch, and it's a $60 order, okay? So that's why I'm sharing this, because I know that my children are supposed to be perfect angels, but our children do not always make the best choices, and those are things that we know happen in our community. West Broward, the incidence of the citations for the stunt driving, and the kids hanging out, that has increased dramatically. And statewide, it's like gone up 191%, because that's what teenagers want to do now. So to all the parents out there, please take care of your kids, have these very important conversations with them. I want to keep it short. I think those are the most critical things that you need to know in terms of your kid. We've increased funding for education. I told you about your local control. So I have, if you have any questions, I don't want to take any more of your time. There's a room full of people. Also, to everyone out there, call me if you need anything. People in this community know that when they can't get in touch with Citizens, I will get them in touch with OIR. I had citizens come to my office and meet with your residents, because when they were kicking people off, they didn't know what to do. So I actually had someone fly to Tallahassee and scheduled a whole day of appointments for them. I bring the DMV out. I have the Alzheimer's bus out. If you have any issues with your healthcare, your health insurance, your Medicaid, you're, had a senior citizen who couldn't get a driver's license recently, you call me. And if I can't help you, I can get you to the people who can, and make sure that at least you're being responded to, because my job is to serve you. Anyone else watching, my cell phone number is 954-668-3662. If you go to any of my social media accounts, that is my cell phone number, actual cell phone. You will get me on the phone, and I will answer and be there to help you. So I'll open it up for any questions.
Great. Thank you, Robin. Any questions from the council first?
Robin, I just want to thank you on, for the pro-recycling and the anti-incinerator notions that's going on. Thank you for your hard work on that, because we really, really appreciate that here in Southwest Ranches.
Thank you. And I just want to say, I appreciate this community. I represent three communities, four communities that are all impacted by the incinerator. And what you have done here with your committee, with Richard and Debbie and everyone all involved, this whole row right over here, actually, they're at all the meetings, everything you have done is, like, the organization getting the information, it's having a tremendous impact. The last meeting, we're talking about doing door hangers. I've linked Debbie up with the Girl Scouts, so they're going to put door hangers on the doors, because we need to raise awareness. But you all are really stepping up and taking the lead. And so I just want to say how much I appreciate that, as someone who will be impacted by this incinerator as well.
Robin, one more quick question, if you would. The porch pirate, you said $40. Does that apply to Amazon UPS pack, that's to any package?
Any package. And I also believe it will probably be litigated to some extent, because when you take a box, you don't know what's in it. So, but that, it hasn't been signed yet. I know the way the process works is, once the bills go to the governor, his office reviews them all. And so that one is not signed yet, but we will see. They did sign the squatter one, which is really important. That got signed today, and, or yesterday, and that's really important for people who, to get people out of their homes who don't belong there.
Right.
Okay. Anything else? All right, you guys are awesome. I had a great time at the, the scholarship dance. And to everyone in this community, I love being here, and I love serving you, and thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin.[876.44][876.44][applause]
Thank you, Robin.[878.01][878.01][applause] Mayor, if I could, Robin, by the way, Robin, bingo, May 11th.[886.73][886.73][laughter] Thought I'd, okay. See, see December. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we have an additional presentation from a, a young lady who was born and raised in Rolling Oaks, and she now attends FGCU, and she's got a project that she wants to bring forward. Her name is Savannah Hodges, and I'd like to get her to the mic, if I could.
Very good. Yeah, thanks for making that motion. Do we need, is that a motion, or just by consent?
Direction, or if not, you can pick about whatever.
Yeah, no, by direction. Very good. Yeah, excellent. Thanks for doing that, Gary.
Savannah, you're up.
Welcome, Savannah. Good to see you.
Thank you. Okay. This is my first time doing this, a little nervous, if I can be honest with you.
Don't be.
I did it for my school, but, okay, so, hello, my name is Savannah Hodges, 18001, Southwest 68th Court. Good evening, council members. I'm here to present a proposal for a placement of flotation devices at the retention ponds located in the town of Southwest Ranches. There are currently five retention ponds located within the town. According to the Center of Disease Control, Florida ranks fifth in the U.S. for unintentional drowning deaths. My proposal includes partnering with the Aidan Perry Foundation for the placement of these life rings. Two years ago, I became involved with, in the Aidan Perry Hero Initiative. I'm currently working with Florida Gulf Coast University, where I attend school to get these life rings placed near bodies of water located on campus. Aidan Perry was a remarkable teenager who lived in the city of Sunrise. He was incredibly smart, loving, and always put others first, just like he did on the day of his death. On April 12, 2022, Aidan jumped into a neighborhood lake trying to save a driver whose car had gone into the water. Tragically, both lost their lives. The loss of Aidan resulted in the creation of a foundation for him that strives to help make communities safer by providing life rings at various bodies of water throughout the state of Florida. Following this proposal, I will send each of you an email with a packet full of more information about this lifesaving initiative, with hopes of meeting with your council and Ms. Perry. I look forward to hearing back from each of you and getting Aidan Perry life rings throughout the town of Southwest Ranches. And you also all have pictures now with the life rings and their place throughout multiple neighboring cities.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Savannah. Really appreciate it.[1041.01][1041.01][applause]
Mayor, if I may, excuse me, I'm sorry. I would like to work with Ms. Hodges on this initiative. I have previously talked to Ms. Perry, and I'm aware of this project, and
That would be awesome.
It's something that Andy and I had talked about previously. We just, you know, there was some, some issues and some further discussions that needed to be had, but I would love to work with Ms. Hodges on this.
That would be fantastic, you know. That would be, that would be great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Awesome. Thank you, Savannah. Thank you all. All right. Item number five, Emile.
Thank, sorry. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council, vice mayor, residents. We're here to present the fiscal year 2023 and our comprehensive financial report. This is just for your acceptance, we're not requiring a vote. The, the financials will be posted on the town's website, and there will also be, a hard copy will be placed at the front desk at town hall, the receptionist appoint at the entrance to the town. At the same time, I want to advise council and, and thank you, Mayor, and Vice Mayor and Council, for your support, for your confidence, trust. The town administrator for his support and guidance under his leadership, Russell, his first ACFR, that's the initials for the financial statement. At the same time, the department, town staff, especially to the finance department, Rich, which is to my left, and Arianna, our accountant, Keith McCollum, have been a tremendous partner in getting this completed. Some good news is that they recently merged with Citrin Cooperman, which is going to expand on a lot of more resources for then, which is essential, will be passed on to, to the town in technology to make this actually more smooth, transparent, and efficient. There's some before, they're here to do a, a brief, quick presentation to, to council, but before that, I want to bring up some highlights that I think is important for you to know firsthand. First and foremost, the town continues to present a healthy financial position. They own assigned fund balance, which is essentially their reserve. They are at 6.6 million. So that represents the 42% of the same year fiscal year 2023 general fund expenditures, net of transfers. Last year, the unassigned fund balance was 5.4. So it is a significant increase year over year. This, basically, that increase is mainly associated to investment income that the town was able to attain, an increase in licenses and permits, and an increase in ad valorem taxes. Looking at it from a different perspective, it's always important to highlight the unassigned fund balance as it pertains to the budget amount, because what we have actually left on reserve for the previous year is what could be used for the current budget, which is the 2024 that we're in. If we make a quick sync calculation, as the one that I just mentioned for the actual, for the year in 2023, this unassigned fund balance represents 35.2% of the adopted 2024 budget. That accounts for about a little over four months of operations. If we were to be, God forbid, impacted for any major catastrophe, that we were not able to generate any revenue, we would still be able to cover our operating expenses for a little bit over four months. Another point to highlight is that the debt of the town has been reduced from last year's 8.2 to this year's 7.5. That's a little over $700,000. With that said, I don't want to take away from Keith McCollum's presentation, but that's something that I feel wanted to share firsthand. So for that, I'm, here, we have Stephen Emery, that's the engagement partner, and Michael Barnett, the account partner.
Thank you, thank you, Emile.
Yeah.
I'll just, I'll see if that'll work. Well, good evening.
I've been trying to fix that for like 10 years.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's ever going to get fixed.
That's my first comment on the audit. I'm just kidding.
Yeah, exactly. Please, you need to put it in there. Maybe we'll get it.
Yeah. Well, fast forward to the end, there, we, we do not identify any significant deficiencies, so there are no comments. But I'll, I'll go ahead and start from the beginning now. Good evening, everyone. It's a, very much so a pleasure to be here this evening, and it's a privilege to do business with, with the town. Based on our audit, we did not identify any matters that would need to be brought to your attention in terms of non-compliance with laws and regulations, grant agreements, or anything of that nature, or any kind of significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal control that we would have to report to you or the auditor general. In addition to that, we also issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements themselves. So what, what that opinion states is that we did conduct our audit in accordance with government auditing standards, so we followed all the rules that GASB requires, and we also did not identify any material misstatements within these financial statements. So when you read them, we did vet them, and you can rely on these numbers. Another important point I'd like to, to note, during 2023, the town was notified that they received a certificate of achievement, of financial excellence and achievement from the, the government, the Governmental Finance Officers Association. They evaluate your financial statements when you issue an ACFR every year, and if it meets certain criteria of presentation and all the different requirements that they have, then you, then you receive that award. We evaluated your 2023 ACFR, and we believe that you're going to get such a prestigious award again next, later on this year, when they evaluate it. Now, a couple of the, the things on the financials I'd like to highlight that Mr. Lopez touched on briefly. So the, the levels of reserves are healthy compared to the GFOA standards that are set forth. So that's a very positive thing to highlight. Also, the, the long-term debt balance of the town has been steadily decreasing due to the regular principal and interest payments that have been made timely, and all the payments are up to date. That, and also the financial covenants that are required by those debt instruments are all, have all been met by the town. So that's an indicator of good financial health. Budgetary compliance is another matter I'd like to discuss. So of course, every year, the town adopts a budget, which is essentially lists out the manner in which you're allowed, that the town is allowed to expend all of its resources. So one of the very important points I'd like to highlight is that you did adhere to budgetary compliance. So the city, the town did not over-expend any resources in any particular categories in accordance with your all's wishes. Another fact I'd like to point out, generally each year, the, the governing body that require, that stipulates how these financial statements have to look and how transactions have to be accounted for, they make updates every year, and they kind of change the way that certain transactions have to be accounted for. So this year, we did update these financials for GASB 96, which is your software arrangements, they have to essentially be capitalized. So the, that is, that was considered when, when the town put these financial statements Some other items I'd like to communicate, all of the significant accounting policies that went into drafting these financial statements, and, and the nature in which the transactions are recorded, those are all included in the footnotes to the financial statements. And that we did evaluate all of those, and they are complete and accurate in accordance with the standards. We didn't note any transactions for which there isn't any authoritative guidance. So all the transactions the city entered into, there was a strict manner in which they needed to be accounted for, and they were all accounted for correctly. There are a, a good degree of accounting estimates that go into any type of financial reporting. We evaluated the criteria that underlie those estimates, and we determined that they are appropriate in the circumstances. We also had no disagreements with management in how any transactions were to be accounted for. We also encountered no difficulties with management while we were conducting our audit. So when we, when we asked for certain items to test in order to determine that they were accurate and valid, management of the town provided those timely to us. And, and that concludes my presentation, but I'd be very happy to answer any questions that you all may have at this time.
Any questions from the council? I, I'd like to just make a comment that it's, I think it's a real testament. Appreciate the work that you all have put into this to review those and, and ensure that what, as residents, we believe is going on is in fact going on and all is being handled properly. And it's, we haven't always had these glowing, glowing reports. And so it's a real testament, Emile, to your team and to all those folks that are working in there, that, that they are doing it things, the right things in the right way and communicating it properly. And so it's very much appreciated. Thank you for your work. Thank you, Emile, and the whole team, for the work you do year-round to make a report like this possible. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Mayor, if I could, I'd like to make a motion that we move public comment to, to the end of the meeting, move it to item 12, and I would appreciate it if I could get a second.
I'll, I'll do a second. I can do a second. I'll do a second.
Thank you.
Yeah. I think, I think it's appropriate that we move it to the end. I'm also going to request that we turn off the cameras when public comment starts up. We've had some issues in the past that I don't, I believe this will be the appropriate thing to do. So I, I, yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you for making the motion. Is there any discussion on the item? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mayor Bryce Cruz?
Yes, thank you. All right. Board reports. Any board reports this evening? Seeing none. Oh, there we go. Hey, Deborah, sorry.
Board reports.
I'll let Richard go first.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. We, we are moving along quite well. We, we are moving along quite well. Debbie and I have been working on getting outreach, getting the students involved. We have a zero waste student group now headed by the Seek Youth Association. And, you know, we've been out there, going to all of the, the executive committee meetings and interacting, giving public comments and stuff like that, and everything's been going pretty well. You know, we're very happy that we have a new executive director, Todd Storty from California, and he, he might be our holy grail to help stop the incinerator, because he has a lot of experience with composting and recycling and stuff like that out in California. One of the things that I will be doing is that I'm heading back out to California on Monday to attend the Zero Waste Forum. And with that forum, there are going to be international speakers and stuff like that, so I'll be gaining a lot, a lot of new knowledge and information to bring back to the town. And I will also have the opportunity to go to the San Francisco Recology Facility, where they do a lot of composting and recycling. So I'm looking forward to having that firsthand experience, and I'm going to document it with photos and videos and stuff like that, like I usually do. And we, I'm also looking to go to the Urban Ore Center, where people can bring their discards, and if they're reusable and they can be repurposed, that's the place where it's like over 30,000 square feet that they have. And it's run by the, by a nonprofit, but it's owned by the, I think it's owned by Berkeley. And I stand corrected if I'm wrong. But anyway, we're, we're going to continue the fight. We're joining coalitions here in Miami as well with the Zero Waste Miami Group. There are about 90 organizations down there. They actually have a celebration coming up soon. I'll share that information. If you're interested in learning more about what's going on, you can go to Broward Clean Air's Facebook page and join us, and we keep that updated on a daily basis. So whatever is happening anywhere and everywhere regarding incineration landfills, zero waste, and building a circular economy, you can find that information on that Facebook page, and we welcome you to comment and, and ask questions and go way back, because we started back in June 2023. So there's lots of posts and information on there, and we have, you know, folks like Jim Lasky and Mike Spitzer, who are contributing towards that Facebook page and putting out very good information for our residents and our elected officials to read and absorb. Debbie?
I was just going to also add that the youth committee really is starting to pick up steam. They actually, one of them went to the executive committee meeting, but unfortunately, with traffic, he got there like a minute after public comment. But they were there to, to share their perspective. They've reached out now, I think the mayor's probably gotten an email, because I think he reached out to everybody on the executive committee, reaching out to each of those cities that sits on that executive committee, to their towns to see if they have student or youth councils, so that they can grow this, the youth committee. There's, they're also reaching out into the high schools. So if we, anyone's listening, and there's any high school students or college students that are interested in joining the effort, they can reach out to them. I think that, as Richard said, we're very fortunate that they've, the authority has put the offer out to Todd Storty and to bring all of his knowledge and his experience from California and his great vast experience of diverting, diverting from incineration and landfills, so that there is enough space in the landfills to take the, some of the disposal that can't be gotten rid of any other way. So I think now we need to make sure, like we, just because we have the executive director that we feel is the right person for the job, we need to keep the pressure on, because we need to make sure that the executive committee allows this executive director to follow the, the more systems of diverting from those landfills and incineration. And so that they all just allow him to continue in that path and not hold them back.
Thank you, thank you, Debbie. Really appreciate all you're doing. George.
George. Hey.
I remember you.
Back again. I left my plaid sweater at home, so excuse me.
This is, this is board reports?
Yes, absolutely. Astorite Foundation, Southwest Ranches Park Foundation, just to touch base really quick. We had a meeting the first month, our meetings are held the first Monday of each month. We're going to have one on March 1st. If anybody wants to come out and join us, the meeting is held here at Town Hall. On our last meeting, we discussed the, having the carnival and, and having the car show at the same time, because those are two of our biggest fundraisers for that, for our situation. But we kind of had the consensus that we're not sure about the status of the park, country medals, you know, being worked on. I know we have funds allocated for that. I've spoken to some of you council members back in January about having that work, you know, expedited or getting it done within a year. We're already three months into the year. It's March 1st, coming up Monday, we're in, we're going to be into the fourth month of the year. So I'm not sure of the status of that, or maybe in your comments, you could update us, or Russell could tell us what's going on, because we certainly don't want the construction of the park and the, and the stabilizing of the fields and the bathrooms to interfere with the carnival that we have coming up. We'd love to have it done before that. Don't know if that's possible, but I, I just want to remind you guys that I'd like to keep it on the forefront, and it's important to us and our fundraising activities as well. So thank you for that. I just wanted to mention that. Have a great day. Thank you.
Great, thank you, George. Good to see you. Any other board reports? Seeing none. Councilmember comments?
Yeah, I'll go.
Great, thanks, Gary.
I'll be brief. Just have a few announcements to make. We're going to have Hazmat at the barn in April on the 27th, from 8 to 2. Shredding starting at 10 o'clock, is that correct? Yeah, 10 o'clock. And Davey Police will be there for drug prescriptions, OPROF for outdated drugs, things of that nature. Mayor, you're going to probably talk about this Saturday, so I'll, I don't want to take away your thunder, I'll let that one go. The Flowmobile is canceled for the month of April, and it may be canceled in, in May also. We don't quite know the reason for it yet, but if it becomes available, I'll be definitely announcing it. BCPA, Broward County Property Appraiser, is going to be here on the 2nd of April, which is this coming Tuesday, from 10 to 2, 10 to 12, at the large conference room. If anybody has any concerns regarding that, they should, that would be a good time to go and get that resolved. And then we've got, the Parks Foundation is putting on Bingo at the barn on the 11th, which is very popular. Cost is $25. December, they can buy tickets at the front desk, yes, no? Okay. All right. Dinner is included in the $25, and, and you get a bingo card, and it's such a deal. And everybody has, everybody has a lot of fun. Grandmaster George is the caller, and he's soon going to put out an album, from what I understand, of, of his one-liners, that everybody loves so much. And that's all I have right now, Mayor.
Great, thank you. I'll be really brief. Okay.
So folks, I'm going to tease an article that I wrote for this upcoming town newsletter, The Southwest Rancher, that's just coming out. We have a tree, or a bush, or a plant that everybody's planting in their hedgerows these days. It's cheap, it grows fast, it is one of those things that add water instant hedgerow. I don't know if everybody's aware of Calusia, it's everywhere. I mean, half of my neighbors have put it down their front for privacy, and it works well. It's got semi the same issues as Ficus Benjamina had. If you recall, everybody used that for years. I think they made it illegal to use, because it's not coal tolerant. I mean, as soon as you go below 40 degrees, they die off, and they're all falling down. They are not hedges, they're trees, just like Calusia is. But here's what the important difference is, and again, I want to just kind of tease the article, look into it. It's highly toxic for, for your pets. It's highly toxic for livestock. If goats eat it, they die. If horses eat it, they die. If dogs eat it, it's likely they'll die. There's a pet poisoning hotline in the town newsletter. So if this happens to you, run for the newsletter, because those folks know what to do to help you out. This stuff is, it's Ficus Benjamina on steroids, and it's deadly, so, you know, read the article for more details on it, but be, be aware for your own animals, and also, if you plant it and it poisons your, your neighbor's animals, there may be some liability issues there. That's all I have at this time.
Okay, thank you, Bob. David?
Thank you. Thank you, everybody who stuck around. Thank you for coming out this evening. Just got three items. First of all, the, back in 2004, council adopted an ordinance for dark skies, and it is one of the five items that are proactive enforced by our code enforcement. And earlier, I think last year, I made a request that the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Board consider revising it due to some difficulty enforcement, some of, some of the parameters of it. It, it still remains enforceable, but there's just some tweaks that need to be done with it. And I'm looking forward to seeing that product come out of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Board. It's a really important issue to me. And, and also, another issue is, I'd like to look into designating the right-of-way along Lustang and Lu Ray Roads part of the equestrian trail network for the town. And the reason I want this is, I want to make sure that our residents who are equestrians have complete, safe, thoroughfare along those designated horse trails. And it's really, really important that they, they have a safe area. So it's important to the town, it keeps our town a character. And then last, I did make a request through the administration. I noticed, I think it was last weekend, maybe the weekend before, I was at the farmer's market, and I happened to be having one of my energy drinks, and I'm looking for a recycling place, and there's no recycling place anywhere. And I was like, well, we need to put a recycling dumpster here. So that is going to be put in place. So there will be recycling done at the farmer's market, and that wraps it up for me. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Jim?
Yeah, Mayor, I have two things real quick. I think most of you know that I am privileged to represent the town at the Broward League of Cities. I know there's been some discussion here the past couple of months, but I do want you to understand that the Broward League of Cities is dealing with the incinerator. I speak to the mayor and the councilmen that represent each municipality on that board of directors, and that is a conversation that takes place at every one. I get around and speak to them, I talk to them, I tell them what we're doing here in Southwest Ranches with the new board that we just approved, the Zero Waste Board. They hadn't heard of it, some of them are now looking to implement that into their communities. So it is being talked about. If you think that I'm not mentioning it, you're dead wrong. I talk to them about every day, every time that I get a chance to talk to them. There's other issues, like I mentioned last meeting, with the schools closing and so forth. I just wanted to bring those back to you, let you know that Broward County is looking at every aspect of what's happening, and I'm trying to keep the town up, up to date. And lastly, I'd like to say that I had the privilege today of sitting in on a Zoom meeting, three-hour, four-hour Zoom meeting today, and I had the privilege of attending the first class of this back into last year, and it deals with recycling, reusing, and refurbishing. And that's what this new advisory board that we have is doing. They're not here to stop the incinerator, they're here to teach us how to recycle, reuse, and refurbish, and that's what this is. It's worldwide. I got two people sitting here this evening, and one at the, at the house, that'll testify that it's worldwide. And other countries have been doing it for 25 years, and there's no reason we can't do it here. But the three members, Richard, Deb, and my wife Rose, each week, they attend a three-to-four-hour Zoom meeting on classes on how to do this. They now have a project, there's four of them working together, that they're going to present back to the instructors next week or week, no, you got a month. Right, the April, right, you have a month to do it, right, right. I know, she's sweating, look. But they have a month to do it, and, and I am absolutely confident that when they get through and they bring the results back here, and we can tell the other municipalities what we're doing, that we'll be setting the example for refurbishing, recycling, and reusing. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jim. You know, I can't help but think back six or eight months ago, when we first started really getting into this, and it seemed like a pipe dream that we would be able to get all this stuff going and, and get so many folks involved. And we, we wanted to see it happen, but would it really happen? And because of some great volunteers in our town and the work they've done, the way they've mobilized, and really gotten a lot more, I mean, I mean Debbie, Richard, Jim, you know, Rose, you know, they've, they've done a great job of getting things, Mary Ann, getting things going and getting things moving. But what they've done is they've mobilized a ton of other people. They've gotten the, now the door hangers out, and we, you know, Jim, to your point, there's a lot of conversations going on all around the county. Now, the students are getting involved. It's amazing how this is really taking on a life of its own, and what we had hoped would happen six or eight months ago is happening. And it's making a difference, it's definitely making a difference at the executive committee that's going to be making these decisions. You can see, meeting after meeting, how they're becoming more open-minded to other alternatives, and how they are deprioritizing incineration, and it's, it's fantastic to see. It's really great progress. We're not, we're, we're certainly not coming down the home stretch, there's a ton more to do, but we are making progress, and it's because we're all getting involved together. So great job to everyone. I do want to mention the chess challenge. I'm super excited about it. It's coming up this Saturday, seems like we've been talking about it for a long time, but it's actually this Saturday, right here in this building, probably, I think it's in this room, and at, from 10 o'clock in the morning till 2 o'clock in the afternoon. This is going to be a fun time, but it also symbolizes and is the kickoff to a whole nother series of events that'll really take shape in the fall, maybe somewhere over the summer, but basically in the fall. And what this is going to do is really kick off a whole new program for our kids to start getting involved with, to build, you know, in the past, I can't tell you how many parents I've spoken to over the years where their kids did not have a place to go and play, because we, all the other towns have these teams, and if there's a spot left over, okay, they'll let someone from out of town join. But otherwise, you're out of luck. And so, so we've been, we've been looking to get this started, I'm super excited to get it going. December, kudos to you, you're doing a great job of getting everything, get the wheels turning and getting things moving in the right direction, and it's going to be, so this Saturday is the kickoff of the chess challenge. We're going to do that more permanently, starting in October on a regular basis, but then we'll also have things for the, the youngest and the seniors in our, in our community, so that we've got more things going to build that community spirit, to be able to build that, that closeness and the tight-knit community that we really want to build. So I'm super excited about it, love to see everything coming together. And then the last thing I wanted to do was, you know, a lot of times, we here in town, we talk about the volunteer fire department, and we talk about what they, you know, what they mean to our town, they're, they've been here longer than we've been a town, and they, they do so much for our town, getting involved in different events, but normally around budget time, there's always a discussion around, you know, is it worth it? Do we want to spend those dollars? You know, what do they really do between these events? And I received this letter this last week, and I wanted to read it into the record. This is a letter from Pat Diaz, the chairman of the St. Mark's Carnival, to our volunteer fire department chief, Lee Bennett. Dear Chief Bennett, on Saturday, on Saturday, March 10th, 2024, during the St. Mark's annual carnival, one of our vendors had cardiac arrest. Southwest Ranch's fire lieutenant, R. Renmo, and paramedic Vollman were there within minute, within a minute, they performed lifesaving CPR and AED to shock the patient. The patient was breathing and awake when he was transported to the ER Memorial West. I just wanted to thank them for their amazing efforts and hope you will acknowledge this amazing care that they gave to this patient. Is that awesome, or what? We are blessed and fortunate to have them part of our town. All right, legal comments.
Mayor, just one, I had sent everyone an email on this, but I just want to announce it publicly. Normally, the Normally, the town, 99% of the time, is never a plaintiff in a litigation. We're always a defendant.
Right.
We're defendant in a lot of litigations. In one recent litigation, the town won. And that was a case regarding Sky One, which is a property in Rolling Oaks that Councilmember Jablonski calls me about often because of his residence there, in which they were operating a full-blown landscape nursery, trying to claim that they were just an agricultural nursery use, not a landscaper. This was a full-blown landscape business. They did not take kindly to the magistrate's order. They sued the town. We won. They appealed. We won. And in the final appeal, the court actually made it clear that under no circumstance can a landscape operation operate out of a landscape nursery if the code does not allow it. Okay? So they're still operating, even though we've won on all steps of the way. So we contacted the court and said, we need to enforce your final order. And they said, you have to actually now flip it on them. And you are now the plaintiff enforcing the order, and now they're the defendant. Because of that change, I sent everyone in the council an email saying, does anyone object to us becoming the plaintiff? Because normally, we do not like to be the plaintiff. But in this case, we need to enforce the order. Since no one responded, I assume everyone was okay. But I have to, under our charter... No, no, I mean responded in bulk. I'm sorry. Yes, we did speak and we did speak. So just for clarity. But I, under our charter, I cannot take official action unless the council's okay. So I just want to state this publicly to make sure the council's okay in this limited scenario to actually enforce the order that we won. It would be great for the record.
Turn on the mic. I'll make a motion and we proceed with the order.
I'll second it. I do have a question about it. Would we be going for an injunction at that point?
That's essentially what it is. But we're calling it an enforcement of the appellate court order.
Got it. Thank you.
Any discussion on this item?
It's fine.
Is there any public discussion on this item? Seeing none. Please call the roll. Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. All right, administrative comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to mention the open-place chess event for tomorrow. I'm sorry, for Saturday, March 30th. Just wanted to also state that the mayor is prepping for that event by giving me a tremendous beating in my office. We play every time after we have our briefings and he's been taking me back to school on chess. So kudos to the mayor on that. Did want to update you on the fire station property acquisition progress. So the town did make an offer, initial offer, for both parcels that we've been talking about with the church. And that was initially rejected by the owners. We're reviewing currently the possibility of utilizing a secondary parcel currently owned by the town to house the station. We're certainly going to weigh the benefits of both locations and make a recommendation to you at the next meeting.
Yeah, that's awesome. It's good to see that moving forward. Really appreciate all the work behind that. You're welcome.
I also wanted to give you a quick update on the Southwest Meadows Preserve restroom building that I think George mentioned. George is there. So we've been working diligently with the architect of record on that. And we have drawings that are, at this point, permit-ready. We did receive a cost estimate that was higher than what we expected to pay for the construction of the building. We just had a recent meeting, again, where we're refining the final numbers on that. We're going to have to modify the project just a little bit to do kind of like a Phase 1, Phase 2 type of approach, with Phase 1 being the actual building, which is the most important component of it. Phase 2 would contemplate the stabilized parking areas and potentially a road that would lead out to Dykes Road. So, you know, we're going to be making a presentation to you at the next meeting, as soon as the next meeting, so you can see some renderings of what the facility is going to look like. And I'll be asking you for some, potentially some additional funding for that so we can do some of the, maybe some of the other items that are contemplated. So I'll be bringing that to you at the next meeting. The architect will be here as well. Lastly, I wanted to, actually, two other things. Wanted to give you a quick update on the special magistrate search. So we reposted that procurement for letters of interest for the special magistrate. And we have received two responses. If the closing of that is April 8th, so at the conclusion of the opening period, we'll be evaluating the responses and then making a recommendation to the town council to move forward with, you know, an alternative there.
Okay.
Also wanted to mention that at the next meeting, we will also be bringing forward the agreement for the sports programming for something that the mayor talked about earlier. So we're excited about that prospect. And this is another effort to provide more and more recreational programming options for our residents. So we're looking forward to bringing that before your next meeting. And then lastly, just a slight correction. Representative Bartleman mentioned that we received full funding for the Southwest 183rd project. It's actually 163rd, so I just wanted to clarify that for the record. That's all I have, Mayor.
Good. Thank you, Russell. Appreciate the updates. All right, resolutions, item number 11.
Item number 11 is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a change order to Absolute Construction Services Incorporated in the amount of $45,000 and 0 cents to mill and resurface Southwest 54th Place east of Dykes Road as part of the Southwest 54th Place from Dykes Road to the Ivanhoe Canal Drainage Improvement Project, approving a budget amendment to the fiscal year 2023-2024 town budget, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute the purchase order and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve? Have a motion and a second on this item. Is there any discussion in the council? Is there any public discussion on this item? Yeah. Please come up to the mic.
My name is Albert Kellam. I'm a resident of Southwest 54th Place. I've been living at that residence since 1993. I just want to comment that today I saw about 20 or 30 cars driving down that street to a day camp, which is being run in a supposed nursery. And it's still there. And it's a nursery that's being run in a residential area across the street from it. On the other side, on the south side, is a landscape maintenance outfit that's running their outfit with six or eight large trucks and trailers driving up and down that street every day, morning, noon, and night. And the work that's been done on the drainage is outstanding. However, the damage that they have done to the road is substantial. And I've been to the drainage and infrastructure meetings and recommended that it be repaved. And they've indicated to me that this would be coming up at this meeting. And I just want to make sure that it gets done. Because I believe that if we don't repave that road and only patch it, that the traffic that's being generated there now will tear it up in a matter of weeks or months. So that's all I have to say. Just please get it done.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate those comments. And thank you for going to that board meeting as well. Appreciate your input there. Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment closed.
Glad we could turn this around quickly.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. If we can please call the roll. Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed. Very good. Approval of minutes of March 14th.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Is there any additions or corrections to those minutes from the council? Seeing none. Is there any public additions, corrections to those minutes? Seeing none. Please call the roll. Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kaczynski?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?